I will call to order the Monday, April 14th meeting of the Verona Common Council. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, please.
Alderperson Bear.
Here.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Manley.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
And Alderperson Years.
Here.
We have everyone here this evening. Thank you for that. Moving along on the agenda, we will move next to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak this evening, there is a sign up sheet on the podium. We would ask you to sign that. And please identify yourself, your name and your address, not only for our benefit, but for those watching at home.
Hello. My name is Evan Touche. I live at 612 East Hillcrest Drive in Verona. I am specifically here to express my concern about item number 9A4, the Hometown Grove plot. The two items about that plot really strike me as something difficult for, I feel, for the city to accept, specifically the narrow roads. Right now, the plot is designed to have 32-foot wide roads in there. That is a new standard, my understanding, for the city. Our current standard is 36-foot roads. I consider this a safety issue even though I know there are some concerns, you know, they're trying to address the narrower roads by adjusting parking and so on, but I still consider this a below, an acceptable standard for the city of Verona. My other concern is the lot size. You know, we've talked about, or I've heard talked about, you know, a new standard of housing that's desired in Verona. But my concern specifically is, is this what Verona is today? You know, right now, we look at Verona, we all moved here for a reason. For me, it's, it's changing Verona, and my concern is our future. What do we want Verona to look like? What do we, you know, why are we here? Why are we in Verona? And for me, it's changing Verona to something else, something new. And if we're going to change our standard, we need to accept that future developers are going to come to us and ask for this standard. I mean, it's a very profitable standard for developers by doing more density housing. And we're going to see a lot of future developers come in and say, "We want to do this. We'd like to fill full neighborhoods of this." And I have a very big concern about that. So, I ask you to consider that. When you, when you do vote on this, please be aware that you are now setting a new standard for our future. And how can Verona respond and express a developer's well? That's fine, but we also want these other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. And we will, when we get to that agenda item, I'm certain that that'll come up as a conversation. Typically, we don't respond to questions during the public comment portion, but certainly those issues came up at the Plan Commission as well. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name's Greg Fromm. I'm with Alexander Real Estate Services. I'm representing Jessica Laufenberg with SBR Coaching. We have two applications under consideration this evening. One's a text amendment and one is a conditional use permit for the property at 505 and 507 Bruce Street. Just a few points I want to make on each. Regarding the text amendment, this is an existing code provision. We are just expanding this, or requesting to expand it to the Urban Industrial Zoning District. It's already in place within the city of Verona. Some of the urban industrial properties are currently located in high-profile areas. The Urban Industrial District is pretty extensive in where it's located. We feel that adding this as an allowable use via conditional use permit will just maximize opportunities for the Urban Industrial District and help minimize vacancies. Our proposal is to allow it via conditional use permit. This is going to allow the city to maintain local control. The Urban Industrial District obviously does have some industrial uses there, and maintaining the integrity of the Urban Industrial District is certainly important, but this allows more high-profile locations such as on Paoli Street, the opportunity in order to expand that a little bit without impacting the, the rest of the properties in that district. This is also a signal to, to businesses that the city is going to allow consideration of suitable businesses rather than just having a blanket no in order to keep out those that are potentially undesirable, but then you also limit ones that you may want as well. Regarding the conditional use permit for 505 and 507 Bruce Street, this is a high-profile location located right across the street from Fireman's Park. It's also very accessible, being in close proximity to the highway and near an interchange. The business that we are, you know, requesting, this personal and professional service is for SBR Coaching. They require an industrial-type business. They need the high ceilings. They need the wide open area. They need kind of the economies of scale for that size of a structure. Moving to a typical commercial district is just not an option based upon the business model for SBR. The goal is to create a hub. We hope to grab other big businesses and have them all located within the exact same building so that them as a cluster is going to be more successful than the businesses individually. We're also hoping that we can make this a destination. SBR is certainly a regional destination right now with clients that travel from Minneapolis, Chicago, certainly all over Wisconsin and the Madison region. This is just going to be able to enhance that. They also hope to be able to utilize the assets of the city of Verona and be able to host more events here as a part of this, this cluster, which is going to yield additional economic activity and certainly room nights, which is a wonderful thing with municipalities that have room tax. During the Plan Commission meeting, which ended with a 7-0 vote on both of these items, parking was something that was brought up as a concern, indicating, you know, that Fireman's Park is a, you know, is a destination, and it's used quite a bit by, by the city and the region. We feel that this is actually going to help with that. SBR, they are, you know, their goal is to attract, you know, athletes, regional athletes. You have Ironman that's going right through the community, and this building is located on that route. For them, they hope to use their facility and have that be where, where people will park. So, people that are traveling in and they want to use the Ironman Loop, that they'll just park at SBR and save those parking stalls at Fireman's Park for traditional park users. We feel that this could be, be a complement and certainly won't add to, to any of the congestion and should relieve pressure. The properties combined are 1.8 acres. That's a lot of room, so there's plenty of parking available. And their goal is also to kind of make the location kind of a hub, you know, that's a very tight-knit group. We're dealing with a very specialized niche client, and aspects of community would, would be great and something that they'll be looking to foster. So, you know, being able to get people to, to park their car at their property, go for their bike ride, come back and just kind of hang out, stretch, rehydrate. Everything can be done at that, that specific location. They hope to make some improvements to the building. The, the current building aesthetically is, is not in the best condition that it could be, and this is going to be a mechanism in order to facilitate some aesthetic improvements to the property. Certainly, the larger improvements will come back to the Plan Commission for Site Plan Review. And being a specialized niche business, they focus more on appointment-based, not, you know, we're not talking a Princeton Club or an Anytime Fitness. This isn't a retail kind of athletic facility. We're dealing with more niche, more appointment-based, small groups. So, we feel that even though it is, you know, an industrial property, it's owned, Urban Industrial, we feel that it's very compatible. Most of their clientele is going to be afternoons, evenings, weekends. It's going to be a good complement in order to keep, you know, enough people in that area, but still facilitate adequate use of the industrial park for other traditional users. So, thank you, and I'll be around for questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak?
Hello. My name is Tamara Copleen. I am a Verona resident. I'm also an RN at the VA Hospital and a USA triathlon coach. I greatly support Jessica's endeavor and vision for this building. She's extremely professional and responsible. I see this as being a welcome and something to be very proud of and as a Verona resident, to have this in our area. I know she's very concerned about safety, about the concerns of the residents of Verona, and, and having, again, this is a hub, and also controlling the parking. And she, she, her clientele is above average income and is, is above, is a one-on-one, an appointment-based situation. So, to reiterate it, it's not a Princeton Club or a big box store or facility. It's, though it's a larger facility, it's still going to be small class sizes. And having the parking available in the back is a great benefit. And I know, as being in contact with other coaches in other areas of the country, they're looking forward to having this as a place to gather and congregate and, and in a more controlled situation there at the facility, especially during the prime months in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment? Going to third and final time, anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will move along on the agenda. Next order of business is approval of minutes from the March 24th meeting of the Common Council. Those minutes were included with your packet. And what is your pleasure?
Motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approves no. Motion carried, and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business this evening, it's, wanted to mention it is the, the final meeting for two people, two elders on our, on our council. One that I have known for, I would say, a really long time, and the other one, not so long, but have the utmost respect for, for both of them. For, and I'm not just speaking on my behalf, I'm speaking on behalf of the rest of the elders and the residents of the city. Scott Manley and I got to know each other, Scott, I think about 20 years ago. We were both working for the State Senate at the time and didn't know each other before that, but have worked professionally there in the State Senate and in the lobbying business and, and also on the City Council here. At that time, you were not living in the city, didn't know you'd be moving to the city, didn't know that you'd be on the council, but certainly have really appreciated your work on, on finance and on public safety. We really appreciate all the hard work. We were talking before about how many meetings go into getting a budget passed, and you just did an excellent job. I think you said with Plan Commission and City Council is about eight years of service with the city. So, we greatly appreciate that very much. So, and Mike, Mike Bear, Mike and I met a year ago in February through a mutual friend. And I know, looking at Facebook pages and stuff, we have a lot of mutual friends as well. We also have the connection where we're both from Anethwok. I was gone when, well, I've been gone over 20 years, so we didn't know each other then, but we still know a lot of the same people. When we talked a year ago in February, you talked to me about how you had moved to Verona and how you wanted to become involved in the community. Little did we know at that time that you would be getting involved as quickly as you did. But again, you did your, you did your homework. You expressed yourself very well. You were a hard worker, and we appreciated your time on the council here as well. So, thank you, but I also want to give each of you an opportunity, if you wanted to say some words, that you could. Scott?
Well, sure. I, I thought maybe I would wait till announcements at the
We can wait until later if you prefer.
At the end.
Okay. We'll do that. Same thing with Mike? All right. Well, thank you both. And, you know, I know I'm speaking for everyone. Let's please stand and give them a round of applause.[897.00][897.00][applause] So, that concludes my remarks for this evening. So, we will move on to the Administrator's report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of updates this evening. First, the city's annual organizational meeting will be held tomorrow evening. That is the third Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM, and that'll be the meeting where the newly-elected elders will take the oath of office. There will be the selection of the council president, Plan Commission representative, and appointments to council committees, boards and commissions. Couple other items coming up. First, I wanted to report that we're continuing work on the North Neighborhood Plan planning process. City Planner and I have been meeting with major landowners in the area and getting their feedback and, and comments on potential land uses. We're going to be working with a consultant to put together some updated revisions to the land use plan, and then looking at bringing that forward in either May or June to Plan Commission and Council with still the goal of wrapping up that neighborhood planning process this summer, and then starting work on the Urban Service Area Amendment process in the fall of this year. Work also continues on the fired EMS facility design process. The design team is now meeting on a weekly basis and going through different subject areas. This week, we'll be meeting to discuss interior design and site plan. We have meetings planned for information technology systems and other building and mechanical systems. And the next meeting of the Ad-Hoc Committee that's involved with the design process is scheduled for Thursday, May 8th at 5:30 PM. And also at that meeting, we're planning to have the construction manager provide an updated construction cost estimate. And then finally, wanted to again mention that the Dane County Cities and Villages Annual Meeting will be held on May 7th in the city of Verona at Gray's Tide House. Start time for that meeting is 5:30 PM. I've heard from some people that are interested in attending, and if anyone else in the council is interested, please let me know. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns? We have two of the new elders who will be sworn in tomorrow night are in the audience, and we just want to make sure that you're aware of that opportunity with Dane County City and Villages as well. So, if, if you're interested in attending, please talk to Bill. Seeing no questions for Bill, we will move then to the Engineers' Report. Mr. Gunlock?
Thank you. Well, the calendar on the wall says it's spring, and with spring comes construction. So, a few items this evening. The first is Scenic Ridge Phase 5. The standby emergency generator for that, for the lift station out there has arrived. It will be, will be tested and placed into service over the next couple of weeks. With that, the Phase 5 construction is complete except for the asphalt surface course and some concrete curb and gutter sidewalk repairs, which will be done this summer. Scenic Ridge Phase 6. Construction plans for the public street and utility construction have been approved. I believe later this evening, you will be considering the Developers Agreement for, for Scenic Ridge Phase 6, and I would say construction is expected to commence as soon as the weather permits. And finally, Lincoln Street Reconstruction. The council will be considering award of a contract for the Lincoln Street project later this evening. Should the council award the construction contract, the construction is, is anticipated to commence on or about May 5th with completion by August 15th. That ends my report for this evening. I'd be happy to answer questions if there are any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock? Not seeing any. Thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
We'll move then to Committee Reports. We'll begin with the Plan Commission. Mr. Years.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under 9A1, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 14-841, a zoning ordinance text amendment modifying the city's zoning ordinance to allow personal and professional services as a conditional use permit with the Urban Industrial Zoning District.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Years?
Thank you. The applicant Gregory Fromm, and with Alexander RE, has submitted a request to amend the city's zoning ordinance to allow personal and professional land uses as a conditional use within the Urban Industrial Zoning District. Personal and professional land uses are defined as all exclusively indoor land uses whose primary function is the provision of services directly to an individual on a walk-in or on appointment basis. Examples of such uses include professional services, insurance or financial services, realty offices, medical offices and clinics, veterinary clinics, barber shops, beauty shops and related uses. The proposed, the proposed zoning district amendment would help facilitate the use of building located at 507 Bruce Street. Staff recommends the approval, and the Plan Commission voted five to zero recommending its approval.
You've heard the explanation from Mr. Years. We also have Adam and Bill are here could answer and respond to any questions. Are there any questions or comments from the elders? Mr. Steiner?
This is the new bicycle and coaching issue, right, Mr. Years?
Mm-hmm.
We've had some issues with small businesses that have come into our city and used our facilities, and, and they set up camp and, and run their little business, and, and they kind of take over some very high-profile areas of our city related to recreation. Mr. Walker, I know a few years ago, was called into the city to deal with some issues where a business had set up a camp and put up a big tent right in the middle of the parking lot at Fireman's Park. As you know, that is a very popular area with a shelter house for a lot of family reunions, a beach where people swim, and at times, under the guidance of people who watch them to make sure they are safe, lifeguards. There are individuals who put in little boats that go out in the middle of the lake, fish, have a lot of fun. And now recently, there are individuals who are coming in and swimming out in this area, long-distance swimming, not under lifeguard supervision. They're doing it on their own. Now, the problem I'm having with constituents who have called is that they take up a lot of the parking spaces with their little tent, and when people would arrive for their soccer event or any other activity in that area, they couldn't park in the parking lot. They were overwhelmed by all the other out-of-state licenses that existed. This is a city of Verona park. I pay taxes. I want to park in that area. In fact, that stall over there is mine. Well, that leads to a little conversation, and of course, Mr. Walker had to come in and ask him why they didn't file for a permit, because he had no clue that they were even doing this until complaints arrived. Now, the past 18 months under his tutelage, we've got a handle on it. And these groups that are still doing this are abiding by the rules of getting a permit, and they are trying to work with our citizens in a very positive way. But there's still a parking issue. And if you've been down there on a weekend, up and down Bruce Street, parking lot is full, and activities are everywhere, especially during the warm parts of the year. So, we need to make sure that we maybe do something that will help control this and make it palable for the taxpayers of the city. Now, we have some things that we do with other groups that use territory over around Community Park, the recreation area around Sonetti Park, and those areas. They're called mud runs and fun runs, and they, they rent the shelters, and they use those places to congregate and time each other. And then they sit around and celebrate how muddy they are, or how fast they are, or whatever they do. They each pay a dollar now. And this dollar then goes into the fund to help keep these facilities up to speed. We've had not too many issues about the heavy usage over in that part of the city, but it, it kind of makes it a little more palatable when I can say to the constituents who are paying taxes here, "We are charging these people. They're not just using our facilities for free. We are getting a little money out of this." Other than the shelter rental, now they're paying a dollar per person. Now, I've asked Mr. Walker to come in tonight, and he, he will explain things that I have forgotten, or he'll at least give you his opinion about this situation. Dave?
David, would you just introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Dave Walker. I'm the Parking Forestry Director here in Verona. And I grew up three houses up from the beach, so I'm probably my favorite park in Verona. That's what I grew up knowing. That's beside the point. Anyways, Brad asked me to come and talk a little bit about SBR and their application to put their building on Bruce Street. And I'd like to say, you know, first and foremost, I'm fully in support of it. I think it's a great idea. It's a great location for them. I will give some props to Jessica. A few years ago, parking was a big issue down at Fireman's Park, and with, with her help, we had a couple of meetings, and we encourage day users that want to use to bike, to park along Bruce Street, and with the help of some signage and getting the word out in the community or the biking community, I think we've, we've accomplished that. And moving her building there with more parking space potential, I think will only improve that situation. Part of the draw of Fireman's Park, obviously, for triathlon training is swimming. It's a great venue. Ironman Course is 50 miles long. There's no secret why people want to come to park at Fireman's Park, because they can get all three events done in one spot. And I think there's, that they peacefully coexist now. You can fish down there. You can go enjoy the beach. You can swim in the morning to do your training. And I think it's a, they peacefully coexist. It's a good blend now. My only concern, and I think with, you know, with Jessica's track record, I'm sure we can work through it. My only concern with them locating there is that the nice setting we have at Fireman's Park that I think our community has come to enjoy may become a victim of its own success. I don't think we're there yet. Certainly, the potential exists, but as we move forward, I'd like to kind of keep an eye on that and make sure that we prevent that from happening. So, answer any other questions if anyone has any, otherwise.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Walker? Seeing none. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Adam, and it's more, it's specific more to what this, this amendment is about. I have some comments as relates to Jessica's application. But I wonder if for the benefit of the public who's wa, watching, you could speak to a conditional use permit and what that means. There may be some confusion, I think, but what's being proposed here, I think, is a reasonable request as far as it relates to the, the code of ordinances. And I, I just think it'd be advantageous for the general public to understand that no matter whether we vote this into place or not, really, we already have a mechanism in place to control uses that are conditional to the industrial park or other places in the city.
Mr. Sarah?
Sure. So, there's two types of uses in the city. You have permitted uses and you have conditional uses. Permitted uses are uses that obviously are just allowed by right. So, if someone wanted to locate and do a professional service, say, in downtown, that's a permitted use. They go to the building inspector, get their occupancy permit, and it's done. The second one is the conditional use permit process. That's a, a more of a longer process. It takes a public hearing. It takes a public hearing. We can impose specific conditions on that as well, and it also has to meet a set of criteria that's actually in the zoning ordinance. There's six findings of facts that we actually go through, and every conditional use permit has to meet those findings of facts. What really makes the conditional use permit process unique is that you can impose basically any condition that you want on the business. So if there was a specific condition related to this use, you could impose that condition on it. Also, with conditional use permits, obviously, if they go above and beyond what the city has permitted, the city could revoke that or make amendments to that permit as well. So the conditional use permit process is more stringent, it's more restrictive than just a permitted use, so I think that gets to your point of the process, and conditional use permits are more vetted out than your standard permitted uses, because those are allowed by right.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on Agenda Item 9A1? If not, we have a motion by Mr. Years, second by Ms. Doyle, to approve. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-010, approving a conditional use permit for proposed personal or professional services land use, known as SBR Coaching, to be located at 505-507 Bruce Street, with the condition that prior to this permit becoming valid, the Common Council shall approve a zoning text amendment allowing personal or professional services a conditional use in urban industrial zoning district.
And the prior action we just took, so that contingency would not be necessary. Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Years?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a fitness, training, and coaching center, known as SBR Coaching. Along with the training and coaching center, the applicant hopes to attract other athletic-related businesses to the building, including a cycling company and a race/events consulting company. SBR Coaching requires a conditional use permit in this zoning district, as it is classified as a personal or professional service. The applicant intends to capitalize on the building's proximity to Fireman's Park. The park is the starting point for many triathlon training rides or other events that are staged at the park. Parking for cyclists was discussed at the Plan Commission, and the applicant will encourage as many cyclists as possible to park at 507 Bruce Street parking lot to reduce the parking issues at Fireman's Park. The Plan Commission voted to recommend approval by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I think this is an excellent, excellent project, and I'm really excited that it's coming to Verona. I think, I think there's a lot of things we can take advantage of with the bike trail and other things, and I'm just wanted to say, for posterity's sake, that I'm really happy about it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Doyle?
I would like to echo Alder Diaz's comments. I think that this is a fantastic business and are really poised to take advantage of the location, and it did seem, from the applicant's comments at the Plan Commission meeting, that they were very willing to try to redirect people from parking in the park's lot, and really trying to help mitigate that issue. So I do appreciate the concerns of constituents, and do know that the applicant is very aware of this, and I'm just excited that someone's willing to kind of rehabilitate that building, and think it's a fantastic location for them, and hope that it has a lot of success moving forward.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Ricky?
I just wanted to put on the spoken record that the tenants currently operating at the property would be invited to stay through their lease term and potentially beyond, and I know there are already some fitness-related businesses in that building, and just want to make sure that that is upheld, that they kind of get a chance to remain, or, you know, work something out with Jessica, which it sounds like she's a reasonable person who would be willing to do that. And I also want to reiterate that I think the additional parking should alleviate some of the parking concerns and issues and not add to them, so I think, I like the plan.
Other questions or comments? Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sarah, I wonder if you could speak to the current use of the building, the 505 and 507? If you could speak to those, that might give people a better understanding who aren't right here tonight.
Sure. Andy, could you just pop the image up on the screen, please? So this is the building that we're discussing. Existing uses in the building are a wood shop. The wood shop, I believe, is located in this portion of the site. There's a person who does auto detailing within the business, or in the building. I believe there's a pottery business in there, and there's also a yoga studio-type class that's in the upstairs. So the intention of SBR is there are some vacant offices on the second floor of the building. Their intention is to locate in those offices and obviously let those leases continue through the end of the year, and then, as Alder Person Ricky explained, they'll reevaluate at that point of, do they need additional space or not? The intention also is for a business to use the back garage. At 505, there's a, or 50, I think it's 505, there's a garage on the, is a second building on the property, and that garage would be used as storage as well. So basically, the building right now is, I would say, probably half-full, maybe two-thirds full, and with SBR Coaching and other businesses that they're going to attract this building, it will be hopefully full before the year is out.
Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Sarah. I would like to echo Mr. Diaz and Ms. Doyle's comments. I've gotten to know Jessica over the last two years, I think it is, on a professional level, not related to what she does, but I've found her to be always very energetic. She's got a very positive personality, I think. Ultimately, she wants Verona to be better for her being here, as well as the community that she's involved in, so I'm very excited. I think some of the problems that were raised about the parking, I also believe Jessica wholeheartedly wants to help solve some of those issues, so that her sport and the people she worked with' sport is not, you know, negatively affected by appearance of the use of the park, so I hope you all can get behind it. I'm certainly happy for Jessica. You can see the building. I think it's a great opportunity for reuse of that building. It's structurally sound, it's just not very pretty. Hopefully, we can put a nice face on it, or help Jessica find a way to put a nice face on it to carry forward, so. I know she would like to be here, but as in typical fashion, she's going and going all the time. I think she's in Florida, I heard tonight, doing some kind of a coaching adventure, so good for her.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Other questions, comments?
I also wholeheartedly support the program I talked a little bit about at the Plan Commission. I won't go into any detail here. I'm really excited for the types of services that they're talking about, and what I'm especially happy about is the fact that I drive by that building almost daily, and it's not very pretty, as you said. So I'm also looking for the opportunity that we've got a willing applicant here to try and do something with the building, but I just, I think it's great, and, you know, we talk about, you know, the people it brings to the community, and driving there, I see a lot of cars with license plates from Illinois and from other states, and those people that are coming here, they're not only doing their athletic events, they're in their training, they're also spending money in the community, so I think that's also important. So I'm wholeheartedly behind the project, and I hope you support it as well. Other questions or comments?
Seeing none? The motion before you is to approve Resolution R-14-009. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 14-842, a zoning ordinance text amendment modifying the city's zoning ordinance to eliminate the maximum building coverage requirement and the true east-west orientation requirement for buildings located within the downtown design and use overlay district.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Years?
Thank you. The city has submitted a request to amend the city's zoning ordinance to eliminate the maximum building coverage requirement and true east-west orientation requirement within the downtown design and use overlay district. The proposed text amendments were recommended in the recently adopted downtown plan and could help to facilitate additional redevelopment in the downtown. The Plan Commission held its required public hearing on April 7, and voted five to zero to recommend its approval of the zoning text amendment.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Any additional background needed? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution R-14-010, approving a preliminary plat for Hometown Grove to create thirty-five single-family parcels, twenty-zero lot-line parcels, and four outlots. I'm not making a motion at this time, so can I just go right into the?
Go ahead.
Thank you. The applicant Apex Investment Group, IXL-C, excuse me, has submitted a request for a preliminary plat to create thirty-five single-family parcels, twenty-zero lot-line parcels, and four outlots located at 845 Kimball Lane. The twenty-zero line-lot parcels will contain the existing townhouses, a relocated four-unit townhouse, and a future four-unit townhouse building. The outlots will contain the private alleyways and private park, a private open space. Discussion at the Plan Commission included the single-family lot sizes, the proposed shared driveways, and the Future Homeowners Association. The Plan Commission reviewed the preliminary plat on April 7, and voted three to two to recommend approval of the preliminary plat.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Questions, comments, potential motions? Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Number one, Mr. Years, you had indicated that it was a three-to-two vote on Plan Commission. Can you, can you talk about some of the concerns that were raised by the commission members that were, that did not vote in favor of the project?
Actually, I'll have Adam do that. I had to be out of town due to a family death up in Duluth, but we had, we had talked about it at prior meetings, and it's much of what was talked about, those, what was talked about at public comment, the road width, the private alleys, and public safety concerns, but Adam can give you the stuff from the last meeting.
Mr. Sarah?
Yeah, in general, it was discussion about the smaller lot sizes. Some of the lot sizes are less than the six thousand square foot minimum in the CR zoning district, so that was a concern that was raised by some Plan Commission members. The other concern was talking about, there's two shared driveways, and kind of the southeast corner and southwest corner of the property. That was discussed, and I think the point that was brought up by the developer was that if you go west of here, there's some duplexes, and those do have some shared driveways already, so that was the kind of discussion that occurred about that. And then finally, there was discussion about the Future Homeowners Association. The Homeowners Association will be responsible for the private alleyways, and the private park, and the outlot within this development, and there was just general discussion how that would be set up, and, you know, what would happen if it were to go away, or what would happen, you know, just kind of going through potential things that could happen with that as well. So I think those are the big three items that I recall that were discussed, but in general, a lot of the items that were discussed, I think, were talked about initially, as Alder Person Years explained, at the conceptual review of this, at the Plan Commission and council level, a lot of the same issues that were brought then were discussed as well again.
Mr. Manley?
Thank you. Just a follow-up question. I guess I'd really appreciate having a little bit more information about this concept of having a private park. I guess I'm familiar with neighborhood parks that have a semi-private element in that, in that some communities choose to put private pools adjacent to a neighborhood park, and you have to pay a fee if you want to have access to or use the pool. Is that what's being proposed here, or how does the general public come to the understanding that this is a private park, and as opposed to every other park in our city, which is a public park, and you're not supposed to be allowed to use it?
We do have, Mr. Sarah can respond, but I also want to point out that the applicant is in the audience this evening, and at some point, he may want to respond as well. Mr. Sarah?
Sure. Obviously, that'd be, you know, more of a discussion than we haven't had of the detailing of how that would be signed, or labeled, or is it labeled or not? You know, we haven't had that in-depth conversation on that yet, of how that would be properly marked. The reason staff has recommended this as a private park is just because of the size of it. From a maintenance standpoint, from our standpoint, it'd be difficult to maintain, and the second reason we recommended it be private as well is that, you know, most people coming into this aren't going to drive in probably looking for a park, so for the most part, ninety, ninety-five percent of the time, it will be exclusively being used by the residents living in that neighborhood. So that was the kind of the two reasons staff has recommended it as a private park. I know the developer's open to it being public, but I will just say that that recommendation has come from staff of making that be private.
Thank you.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions for Adam. What happens if the neighborhood association goes away? And then I guess this would be maybe a question for the developer, but, so if it is a private park, and I just go there and don't realize it's a private park and walk on it, I mean, would I be subject to a trespassing ticket, or what?
Yeah, I'm Chuck Buehl. I'm representing the owners, which is Apex Investment Group number nine. This is not intended to be a private park. It can be public, but it's privately maintained. If somebody comes into the neighborhood and wants to sit down and enjoy the proposed playground that is going to be there, it's not intended to be private for just the people there. It's intended to be used for the public. And that's our intention, anyway. Not that it's, we're going to, we're going to post it as private only for the people, but the community and the development and the Homeowners Association will be maintaining it. Okay?
Mr. Diaz?
I guess my other question is, what happens if the neighborhood association goes away? Like, what'll happen to that street? Because I know there's other parts of Verona that have private streets that are not well-maintained, and people assume that they're being maintained by the city, and they're not, and I would like to avoid a situation where we have the alleyway not being maintained.
Mr. Sarah?
Yeah, so it's the, the two alleyways would be, would be private, and there would be three public streets within this development. The two alleyways, you know, the response, I guess, from a staff perspective, is we could build language into the developer's agreement regarding that, regarding a maintenance of the open areas, maintenance of those, those private areas. So if a developer or Homeowners Association weren't to maintain those up to whatever standard we established in the developer's agreement, we could build that language in, then obviously, if they weren't cutting the grass, or they weren't, there wasn't unsafe condition in the alleyways, or anywhere else in the privately maintained, you know, Homeowners Association areas, we could have language built in that saying the city could come in, do that, and obviously then bill it back to the Homeowners Association, which is all thirty-five or thirty, whatever, single-family lots and twenty-zero lot-line lots. So that's, that's kind of how I would see that would, that could happen as well. It's not uncommon in other parts of the state where the city, in some cases, doesn't own stormwater ponds, so a lot of time, homeowner associations own stormwater ponds, so it's similar to that, where if an issue were to come up with any kind of, in those situations with stormwater ponds, the city can come in, clean out the ponds, and deal with it at that point. So this would be the same way of, you'd have a private, private alleyway or park that, if an issue arose, the city could come in, clean it up, and then bill it back to the association at whatever was set up in the developer's agreement.
That association is also an entity that's created and registered, so it just doesn't happen to go away. It has to, it's registered and has to be maintained, and it will be represented by owners in that community, of the thirty-five lot owners, and of the twenty owners of the zero lot-line townhouses.
Mr. Sarah, if you could, I know we talked about the Plan Commission, but could you just briefly explain what is meant by zero lot-line, if people are not familiar with that?
Sure. If, Andy, you could pull up the image I have in the computer? So the zero lot-line area for this development would be this, this orange area here, and what that means is that basically the wall of the townhouse unit would be, would be on the lot-line itself. So you, right now, these are actual condominiums. The developer's proposing to do away with the condo plat and come in and do the zero lot-line. So it'd be the same look of the existing buildings out there, you just would have a different type of ownership to it. Instead of having the condominium form of ownership, you'd have a zero lot-line ownership, but nothing itself would change. It'd be, it would look like a condo, but it's being called something different, and the reason, the reason for that is condos right now still have incredible amount of difficulty obtaining financing for projects. There's still disregardism from the 2008 crash that the condo market hasn't recovered from, and the challenge with this project even right now is that when someone comes in to purchase a townhouse, or comes in to refinance their townhouse, the project isn't done enough for a lot of lenders. You know, you need a certain percentage of the units constructed for many lenders to actually provide money to it. So one of the options, one of the things the developer is proposing is to make these zero lot-lines. Banks look at these a lot nicer when they're called zero lot-lines. But nothing physically out there besides the four unit that the developer's proposing to pick up and move would change from the existing townhouses out there. I think those are brown or tan in color, so those would look exactly the same. It would just be a change of the type of ownership that'd be occurring, but the buildings themselves, you'd have the same setup as a condo, it just wouldn't be called a condo, it'd be called a zero lot-line unit.
Thank you. Mr. Bear?
I guess I had a question on the planning side of things, on the minimum lot-line requirement, and for those that have the history, what was the justification for having, was it six thousand? And why, I guess, why was that set? When was it set? What kind of examples do we have of when that's been, when we've granted some exemptions to that?
Mr. Sarah?
I believe the-
I, I believe the CR district was put in place late nineties, early two thousands. And the, the model for that development is, was kind of based upon, I want to say, the golden rod circle area. I think that project was done with a PUD before that CR district was put in place. So I, I think that was the basis for six thousand square feet. I don't know why six thousand was put in place. I mean, six thousand, eight thousand, ten thousand, you know, depending on how many districts you have. But that CR district for the minimum six thousand in that district was late nineties, early two thousands. Now the NR district, that one has an eight thousand square foot requirement. So we have two single-family zoning districts in the city. But it, the rationale also, I think, may have been from an affordability standpoint. There are some caps within the CR district limiting the size of homes, which I think has been discussed at length over the years as well. But getting back to your question about six thousand, I don't know why that was picked. I think there was a, a development in the city that they used as an example.
Mr. Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so what's the, the minimum size in this, this version of the proposal?
A little, little, little more than four thousand.
Okay.
And the smallest lot goes up.
And, and if I, if I could, and, you know, feel free to, to not answer the question, but is there demand for this kind of housing in Verona? Have you, have you done that sort of analysis?
We have done an analysis, yes. We have reached out to the Stark Company, the realtors in the surrounding Dane County area, and they have researched the area and also talking to Adam about the available building sites in Verona. There are very few unencumbered sites at all to be built any further. And right now, if we had these available, they would probably be sold by now. The, the market is just exploded with units that are, say, two-hundred-and-seventy-five and below. And, and I feel very positive about it. And also it's from our, from our personal standpoint, we have been contacted by several, more than several, building contractors who have contacted us showing their interest in wanting to be able to pre-purchase some, realizing that we are opening this up to be purchased by individuals. And of course, the contractors would like, you know, to, to buy, pre-buy several. So I think that we'll find that this is a project that would do very nicely.
Go ahead, Mr. Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It, it just seems to me that if, if there's demand, it, it's a small-scale project. It's not a, a whole, something the size of the north neighborhood, for instance, that this is a good opportunity for the city, that it's a, a place to, to build some tax base. And I think that smaller lot sizes with improvements, you end up, the city ends up with more, with more tax revenue in the future because of that rather than larger lot sizes with potentially less improvements. So the, the width of the roads, I appreciate that the developer has, has worked on this issue. I know we've gone in a few of these iterations from fifty-two and fifty-six and sixty. And my recollection from, from the last time we talked about this was that fifty-six foot wide roads are wide enough to accommodate public safety vehicles. I think if, you know, if we have another winter like the one we just had where there's three feet of pavement on either side gone to snow that's sitting there for six months, that could become an issue. But I, I think we certainly have some temporary solutions to that sort of problem. I think that this is a, a good opportunity for the city to use a difficult parcel and to get some benefit out of it. And I appreciate that, that you guys have been willing to work with us on, on this and the many concerns. And you've certainly put in a lot of time and effort to, to get it right.
If I might add to that.
Go ahead.
Just a little bit, I'd like to add a little bit of the history of this, is that this project was approved back in nineteen, or it's two thousand and five as a full condominium project was, was only halted because of the market. There was ninety-four different condominiums to be built on that of series of sixes and fours and twos with a thirty-six foot wide private street running through it. It would have continued on and been built if the market would have allowed that, but it did stop. So unfortunately, we're actually, we don't see this as, as something as a precedent that you're setting. We're looking at a project that's, that we're having to try to re, reposition, repurpose, because we've got two twenty-four units that are already built on one side. We've got sixteen condominiums on the other side, and we're stuck with an area in the middle that we're trying to figure out what's the best way that we can possibly utilize that. And, you know, we've, we've been in front of the commission for two different concept reviews. We've gone from private to public streets. We fought, but we compromised on that because we felt like, you know, it, it needed to be done. There was good points about all of those things that were brought up, and we tried to compromise to, to make it work. We went from thirty-nine lots and then we've got thirty-five lots now with a, a privately financed, a public park. And you do have a copy of what we intend to put in the park. No swimming pools. Couldn't handle that. It's just meant to be a, a gathering area with the center will be mulched and it'll have a playground area in it, intended to be a place where the, the people in that community can easily walk to, can converse and can, can let the children play whatever they need to. There'll be an area on the other side that'll be big enough to allow people to run their dogs if they'd want to. And it would be an area open to not only the thirty-five lots, but also the twenty single-family owners also. Incidentally, it is the, the owners of this property that intend to dissolve the condominium, create a homeowners association. And, and as soon as the rental leases are up, they will be refurbished and put on the market to sell. Our goal is to have those twenty units be single-family homes privately owned. So no longer would it, will it be rentals. Okay? We've noted that the density, certainly from the approved project of ninety-four units, is now down to fifty-five units, which includes the thirty-five single-family lots along with the twenty, the twenty zero-lot line lots. And we have chosen the, the traditional neighborhood design, which was really created in two thousand and five. If you look at the existing building that is on, on Kimball now, those are traditional neighborhoods. And we felt like that's, that's the intent of that area. And the city only allows us to have two entrances and exits off of Kimball. So you couldn't face a typical home on that street and allow it to be able to get on and off of Kimball. So the, the alternative that we're, that we're dealt with there is an alley-fed lot. And it, so we called on Denofrio Kotke, who has done a tremendous job of designing not only this one, but, but several others. And I'm going to ask Ron to come up front and kind of describe a little bit of the different communities that, that has been successful using the traditional neighborhood design. But, and lastly, I'd just like to say that the definition of a traditional neighborhood design is to really de-emphasize the use of the automobile, increase the community activity and involvement, and actually provide services within a five or ten-minute walk. And right now, you've got a really nice area right there because by looking at the services that are already existing, you've got Once Upon a Time Childcare down on, on Whalen. You've got the BP Convenience and Gas Station, which is a service. You've got Gray's Tight House Restaurant and Bar, Tollison Park, Tower Park, Van De Grith Park. Of course, you've got the Glacier Edge Elementary School, which is a huge advantage in that area. We've got a veterinary service and we've got a chiropractic service. And the only thing missing of a neighborhood traditional design is the residential portion of this. Remember that the, the lot that we're working with is not something that I think that developer is going to come to you and say, we want to, we want to have limited or small, small lots. What we're trying to do is make this parcel effective in the community and something that, that can be worked. And we've, we've seen the traditional neighborhood designs in other parts of the, of the city, in other parts of Dane County, and they're working very nicely. So this is not a new idea. This is a, this is a concept that we felt could fit just for this, and that's why we're here with a PUD. Not requesting that you change any, any zoning, but we need the help to have you guys help us develop this thing. We're willing and we're working to, to input a good share of money. And Steve is going to talk a little bit about the benefits. But I would like to invite Ron Claus to come forward. Ron is the principal owner of Denofrio Kotke. He's done a tremendous job for me personally in other developments that we've done. I'd like to have Ron just discuss this one if you would.
Before Ron comes up, the, Mr. Years has long been waiting for a question. So I'm going to ask Dale if...
Well, it's not really a question. It's, it's more some comments I wanted to make on it, on, on the proposal. I've, I've been on the fence with this pretty much the whole time. I've always supported the overall idea. I think bringing in some more single-family housing to Verona that is more along the lines of a starter home is, is a great idea. However, I have some of the same concerns that was brought up during the public comment. Not that it drastically changes the city, but the public safety issues. I'm not a proponent of the alleyways. I think that that asked for some problems with law enforcement and also the homeowners. There are spaces in Verona that are privately owned where it, it doesn't work as ideal as we'd like it to. I do appreciate that streets were widened some, but I do have some concerns, as, as Mr. Bear mentioned earlier, you know, if we have the snow cover. However, what kind of brings me back to supporting it is making the townhouses owned. I think having those become ownership rather than rentals, it gives fam, young families more of an opportunity to, to own something in the city of Verona. You know, and my wife and I, we just purchased as well, and we went with the condominium townhouse style too, because we couldn't afford much else. But we wanted to be homeowners rather than renters. And I think that, that's, that's come, made me believe that I'm going to vote for the project, but I do think we have some issues that we could have headed off. I hope they don't become severe issues. And I think in future developments in the city, we should really steer clear of privately-owned roadways. I just think that they have the potential of creating way too many problems than, than they're really worth. And so that's really what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. We'll let Mr. Diaz, Mr. Steiner, and then we'll have Ron come up.
Thank you. I, I had one question and a couple of comments. Just for the record, could you restate what you expect the value of these houses to be once they're built and sold?
We're expecting that we'll be able to put the townhouses, the zero-lot line units on. Now, there are several different designs in there, but we'll expect that they'll be, I'm going to say within probably the, the one sixty range to maybe one eighty-five, maybe one, maybe two hundred, depending on the market, obviously. But that's been an initial estimate from the Stark Company. Second one, that our lots are going to go on the market in the, in the forty-five to sixty-five range. The largest ones will be that. And really, there are no lots that we know of in the Dane County area that are going to be that priced at that range. They're not large and, but we, but, so we have compensated for that. We're not trying to, trying, trying to make a huge deal. But we think that the, the homes that we've seen will go in the area of probably two hundred and a quarter up to maybe two seventy-five to two eighty in that price range, depending, of course, if an individual, individual could put more into it. But we did check out Linden Park. We've checked out Grandview Commons. And we also looked at Smith's Crossing, looked at what was for sale out there now. And that's very realistic in the, the two-twenty to two-thirty range, all the way up to three hundred thousand. So...
Thank you. That, I think that is one of the reasons that I can support this project. I recognize it's a, a tricky spot, and, and I understand other developers have been here before. And I think we're getting to the point now, it's, we just have to pick are we going to develop it or not. And, and I think we do want it to develop it. I think it's in a good location. I think there's a lot of other amenities nearby that, that residents would like. I'm, I'm glad with how you've worked with the city. I do share Alderman Years' concerns about, about private streets and, and things, but I'm willing, willing to support this project. And I, I like the idea of a, a traditional walkable neighborhood. I think it's good to have all sorts of variety of housing in Verona. It's not like, this is not like the house that I live in, but I, I wouldn't want to make everyone live in a house like I live in. I think it's, it, variety's good and I'm happy to support this project.
Mr. Steiner, and then Ron.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Ser, is there anywhere in this city that this type of development, a sister development like this exists?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
May I ask you why you support this or propose this?
Sure. I think this is a challenging lot. I think that, you know, as I've said before, that with the TND option, especially for those houses along the roadway, you do get a consistent look with the, with existing townhouses on that, in that area. So, one, you'll have a cohesive design in that area. Second, like I said, this is a challenging site. You know, we looked at a few different options, how this could lay out. I think this works. I think there's, there's a, there's a part of demand for it. And this is a, a site that if you wanted to try looking at more of a walkable TND-type project, this is a, an ideal site, kind of similar to what the developer pointed out. You have a school across the street. You have obviously non-residential uses close by. And I, I believe that it works in this area.
Thank you. I will not support this. This doesn't belong in the city of Verona. We have never developed anything like this. And I, I think we're heading down the wrong road by doing this. It creates problems for everyone, all public services, especially the fire, the police, and people who pick up our garbage and recyclables. I'm unhappy that, that it even was allowed. And I'm sorry to you, sir, that, that you had to spend all this money to do this, but I think this is wrong. And there are many people who have spoken to me within my district that own homes, have been here a very long time, and they don't think this is right for the city of Verona. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Ron Claus, Denofrio Kotke. Our firm provides civil engineering and land surveying services for new projects. We have done a lot of work in Verona in the last twenty years. Just finished the Meister addition out by Epic. We're on the Epic Campus. We're working on Cathedral Point, finishing up Scenic Ridge that Bob mentioned. We did Hawthorne Hills that this project is in. The Farm and Fleet, the, the recent auto parts store. So we, we've looked at a lot of different projects here as well throughout Dane County. We, we've done a lot of different things. This project is unique to Verona, but not elsewhere. We've done this in other places. We've addressed all of the things that Alderman Steiner just mentioned. It can work. So yes, it is different, and, and you haven't seen it, but I have. Our firm has done this. So I'd be happy to answer any more questions about that. But what we've even looked at, I mean, the road widths have been done many other places at this width. We've done the traffic studies on parking, on emergency vehicles. It, it's not, it's not a problem. It's, it's been done.
Thank you, Ron. Ms. Doyle?
I appreciated the comments that I heard earlier about having a real walkable development that really creates that sense of community engagement, because I think that this is a very difficult area. And do you understand Alder Manley's idea that this is lucrative for developers to have more high-density development? I also believe that it's lucrative for the city as well, because we're utilizing existing infrastructure. We already have businesses that could benefit from having residents in the area that can patronize their... patronize their businesses. And I believe because it's within existing public safety and service areas that that would be a benefit as well for the city. Back to the idea brought up in public comment by Mr. Touche about what we want our community to look like. And I think we want our community to be a place where people can live throughout the course of their lifetime. Lots like this, I believe, appeal to young families. They can also appeal to older residents who are looking to downsize but still want to have their own homes. So, I believe that there is a demand for this type of housing and that our community can benefit from this. So, I appreciate your efforts in bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask Ron of the location of the examples where you've done this elsewhere.
The closest location would be Linden Park on the far west side of Madison, just north of here, where it's, there's Alley Product, similar lot size, homeowners association, but also in Sun Prairie, at Smith's Crossing, on the east side of Madison, Grandview Commons. So, yeah, and I'm probably forgetting a couple more.
Is, I'm not really familiar with neighborhood names outside of Verona. Is Linden Park, where specifically is that located?
It is off Valley View Road. So, if you took County M North and then hit the first roundabout, you'd go west on Valley View. Brand-new school out there.
Okay, thank you.
If that helps you.
Mr. McGilvery?
Before Mr. Claus leaves, what's the average lot size in Linden Park? Do you know?
Similar to this. Some of them are actually a little narrower but a little deeper, but 4,000 square feet is about the average. For this type of look, that works. This is a smaller house, a narrower house, and for what we're trying to do with the garages off the alley, it would look weird a little bit on a big lot. Mr. McGilvery?
Could you tell me what the park size is, Ron?
This park in this neighborhood?
Eighty-nine hundred square foot.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah.
So, roughly the size of what we have is home lots?
Correct.
Everywhere else in Verona.
That's true.
It's pretty tiny. And this isn't necessarily for you, Ron, but one of the comments was, I believe Chuck said, these aren't large. I want to be clear, these are tiny. These are tiny lots. I can't be supportive of it. I know you've tried. I know this is a difficult, difficult piece of property, and I've said this before when it was other people before us. It's unfortunate that it's difficult, but sometimes you have to wait until you find the right thing. I'm not convinced that this is the right thing. I understand what you're saying, Ms. Doyle, about the walkable lots, our walkable neighborhoods. I live in a walkable neighborhood. Just about all of us, I think, live in walkable neighborhoods. The idea that people are going to get away from using their car, I think, is, frankly, I think that's unbelievable. The businesses that were mentioned, I'm pretty sure are not going to have enough employment to employ all these people who live here, and they are going to have cars and they are going to use cars. That's just a fact of life. I'd like to know what the average, what the distance between these homes is, because there is a safety concern there, too. There's a reason we've had setbacks in the past, a minimum setback for homes. These homes, I know, I know the argument will be made that there are places like Milwaukee and Madison that have these very, very narrow lots, and those homes have maintained their value. But I have to tell you, those homes were built at a different time. They have a different character. There's a bit different quality of construction that went into those homes, and that's why they've maintained their value. I'm very concerned that these will not be able to maintain that kind of value because of the size of the lots, because of the size of the homes. I recognize that there is a need for entry-level homes, but putting them on these postage stamps and saying these aren't large lots, I have real issues with that. I also have issue with the fact that I don't think we have any support from our staff beyond Mr. Sayer, and I understand Mr. Sayer's job is to try to get development in the city, and I think he's done a very good job of working with this applicant to get this done, and I appreciate that work. But I think from a public works point of view, or from a police or fire point of view, our engineering, I don't think I'm hearing overall support for this. And these are the people that I rely on to help me make an informed decision about how the community is built out. And if we've got all those staff people telling us that, you know, they're being forced to the table, and they're not going to say anything negative, but they're not really in support of it for various reasons, I have to listen to that. And I think Mr. Touche's point about how we want our city to look, at this table, I've always thought when we're making these decisions, we shouldn't make decisions based on what the current economic condition is. What you make your decisions for your city are based on what the city's going to look like in 20 years. And these decisions aren't really necessarily relevant to the next five years. They're relevant to the next 20 years. And I think you are setting a precedence for development. Be very, very cautious about engaging in a development that has 4,000-square-foot lots, because once you've done it, it's going to be very difficult to say no to it again. Someone else like Mr. Buell will come to us and say that they've got X amount of money invested into this property, and the only way to make it work is to have smaller lots. And really, you are not going to have much of a leg to stand on in saying no in the future. I would caution you on that part. Neighborhood associations, just want to be clear here, they're only as good as the paper they're written on, because they can be registered, that's fine. But if money isn't getting paid into that neighborhood association, there's no money to fight legal battles that need to be fought. And once that happens, it becomes the city's problem. Those alleyways become our problem. Those narrow roads become our problem. That small park that currently the park department and the public works doesn't want to maintain, that becomes our problem. I have issues with the idea that in 15 years, if that neighborhood association is struggling and not there, and we're the ones who are now on the hook for plowing this area, Reader, Ron Reader won't, he's not going to say anything negative, because that's just not the type of person he is. But Ron Reader won't be here, and someone else will be. They're going to have to be the ones who deal with these narrow roads. I don't think the engineering has changed that much. I think they've agreed to go along just because they feel like they have to. What else did I have? Utilities. Utilities currently are in between the homes. That's where most utilities are. Mr. Reader, do you know, are there any issues? Have you talked to anybody like a Lion or MG&E about the distance between these homes and what that means for utilities?
I...
Ron, could you come up to the mic, please?
I have spoken to Lion Energy. I do know that they have had some concerns with these traditional neighborhoods of trying to get power to the homes. They're working with Veridian right now on to try to resolve these issues. I do need to be honest to the entire common council, though I have not went into a lot of detail with it, Lion Energy. I've just had conversations with their field personnel, so...
Thank you. For Mr. Claus, then, if I could, or the developer, can you tell me what the average distance you're projecting will be between these rough lines? If you've got a 4,000-square-foot lot, I'm thinking it isn't much.
The proposal, proposal is for five-foot side yards, so there would be a minimum of 10 feet between homes.
And Mr. Sayer, could you tell me right now, I can't remember, does roof projection count roof line, or is it foundation line? Mr. Gunlock is whispering in here.
I believe it's, I believe it's foundation. I think for this project, I think they're proposing a six-foot setbacks for all, all homes.
So, you're, the roof line itself, for everybody who's not following, you've got your eaves that stick out over your house. If you're, if you're five feet off the roof line or off the lot line with your foundation, your house roof line sticks out another foot past, so you're two feet closer than the actual foundation. That's a concern for me, too. I know there are, there are places in Milwaukee and Madison that have homes like that and other places, like you've mentioned. Again, these homes that we're building now, they're, they're made with foam, styrofoam predominantly. They have plywood corners, and they're covered in vinyl. If you look at these buildings, that's pretty much what it is. Firefighters will tell you, they go up pretty fast. And when you're that close, that's a concern for me. I can't turn my, a blind eye to it. That's why we've had setbacks like we've had them before. So, again, take that into consideration when you're approving 4,000-square-foot lots. Thank you.
Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've heard a lot of really compelling, thoughtful comments tonight on, from people on both sides of this argument. I'm ultimately swayed that this is not in the best interest of the city. I'll pick up on the point that Mr. McGilvery just made, and that is that our current side-yard setback is, is 10 feet, which gives you 20 feet of separation between houses. And I can tell you that in my neighborhood, it's, a lot of people are even further apart than that. But when, and some of you who've been in the city for a while might remember this, when we had the fire on Dunhill, where somebody's gas grill caught their garage on fire, that was my backyard neighbor kitty-corner, two houses down. And the house that was at least 20 feet away, I think it was probably actually further than that, had their siding melted off, and the OSB sheathing was, began to get scorched in the amount of time that it took for the fire department to get there. And my fear is that if we had closer, houses that were a lot closer than that, we might have had two structure fires instead of one. I think that's a big concern. I also think that, that the width of the roads and public safety for ambulance and fire, you know, first responders, police is a concern. But I think ultimately, the biggest concern I have relates to the, to the lot size. And Mr. Bear, I think you asked a lot of good questions and made a lot of good points, but one of the questions that you asked was, you know, why do we have these arbitrarily established minimum lot sizes? And I think there's a variety of reasons for that, and one of them is that when you have a lot size that's, you know, for example, a minimum of 6,000 square feet or a minimum of 8,000 square feet, you've got enough physical property there to have a garage and, and a driveway that's long enough to park a vehicle or two vehicles on. And you don't have to finagle shared driveways and shared alleys and, and that sort of thing that, that really complicates a lot of these development issues, and I think leads to, ultimately can lead to user conflicts that are, that are otherwise avoidable. And, you know, I guess from, from where I sit and from, you know, the standpoint of the people that I've had the pleasure of representing in the, in the second district for the last six years, a lot of us have built a home in Verona because of its unique character and because we have a very different type of community and a very different type of feel from other communities like Madison. And we have a unique and, and I think very distinct character in our community. And a big part of that is our housing stock. And I, I'm just very concerned that this is taking us in, in the wrong direction. And although I appreciate the comment, and I think it's, it's actually a very compelling argument, that if there was one place to do something like this, it's, it's at this particular location, because it is a very, very challenging parcel of property to develop. And I'll grant you that. And this, I will also say that I think that this is a very thoughtful and creative way to try and develop this particular project, but, or this particular piece of property. But having said that, I just, at the end of the day, I can't bring myself to support this type of development with this type of lot size. And I think that I agree with Mr. McGilvery that it will set a tone. You know, we're not a precedent-setting body, but I can just about promise you that if we approve something like this, there will be a developer who comes to the city in the future that says, well, you did it for the Apex Development, and 4,000-square-foot lots, we're acceptable for that. Why, you know, why isn't it acceptable for my property as well? And that's, that's the big concern. That's, I'm very concerned that that's something that will tie the city's hands in the future, and that's why I can't support it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Steve Sunstrom with Apex Building Repair. We do the capital improvements for Apex. First, I need to clear up that our setbacks in the GDP are six feet rather than five. Got that wrong. The other thing I wanted to say is just thanks to everybody on the council, to Adam and the rest of the members of the plan commission for, for interacting with us on this and, and helping us come up with a development that, that is tailored to the city's needs and this particular neighborhood's needs. It's been a lot of, a lot of effort on everybody's part, yours and, and ours, and I think it's been a success. We've got a project that will work for the, the city. It'll meet the needs of the city. It's got a lot of really good, good points, and it, it works for us economically. More importantly, it works for the city. A few good points about the project, most of them have probably already been covered tonight, but the one is just introducing the traditional neighborhood development. We're not, you know, it's not going throughout the entire city, and it's not for everybody, but there's a big demand for this type of neighborhood with young buyers, people that want to live in a neighborhood that encourages community, that encourages interaction between neighbors. And this, this accomplishes that by the front porch being up against the sidewalk. You're going to get homeowners interacting with pedestrians. You're going to get with the smaller private yards and the central park for the gathering area, you're going to get people collecting there to, you know, do outdoor activities. The other thing it allows for is affordable housing and entry-level housing. And I really feel like we've covered both of those items well with, with this project. The entry-level housing would be with these smaller lots that, by the way, have been done before, old and, and new. And we're not, we're not reinventing the wheel with this. It's, these are proven neighborhoods that we know work. The, so we're, we're able to produce smaller lots with affordable lots and affordable homes. And then with our zero lot line development, we're able to really get into some affordable housing there that will give people a chance to, to own their own houses and start building equity and start building a future for themselves. And I think that, that the, well, another, another point is that we're, we're providing builder choice on this, too, which is going to be nice for the community for small-time builders in the area who want to get some action that's around here been, been completely monopolized. around here been, been completely monopolized by the larger builders who develop and build and don't let other people in. We'd like to give people the opportunity to bring their own builder, which is also going to mean that a variety of builders is going to equal a variety of home styles, just organically. The other, I've got one last point that when we're, this is all said and done, we've, we'll have added to the, the Hometown Grove will have added approximately $200,000 to the annual property tax revenue, which is something to be considered as well. And we really believe that, that this development is good for Verona. It's good for the neighborhood that it's going in. And we hope that, that you all agree with us. And thanks again to everybody who agrees with this project or doesn't for their consideration on this.
Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Before you leave, one of my questions, and I, I recognize it's difficult. I mean, I, I was just leaning and telling Liz that I think we've seen this three different times. It's come before us in some iteration or other because it's a difficult site. But, and I understand the, the issue with the townhomes or condos as it relates to banking. But if the zero lot lines are work, will work in that respect, I think Liz and I can agree that there are, there is a certain group of people that is looking for that type of a home where they don't have a, a, a big piece of property to maintain. They want to have their own home. Why wouldn't you do those? Because I could get behind that a little bit more, but not-
I'm sorry, why wouldn't we do what?
Why wouldn't you do the zero lot lines as they were originally intended?
Are you talking about-
With the condos?
The, the original, like 94-unit development that was approved in 2008?
Wouldn't have had the issues that you're having with the, the road here right now.
The, it's very difficult to, to get financing for, for condos. At least that's my understanding of it.
I get the condo part, but we're talking the zero lot line, too, which is not, you're, you're doing it in one part here, but not in the other part, which-
Are, are you suggesting that a better design would have been to just stick with the townhouse, that old town-
That's how it originally was projected. And you didn't have the issue that you're having to try to get this narrow road with the alleyways in it. Am I, am I missing that?
You wouldn't allow us to build that because it's, it was 36-foot wide private streets for the, and, and that's what is designed right now and what, and what is approved. I guess I missed your point about developing this into all zero lot lines? Is that what you're asking?
Mr. Buell, I'm not the one who allows you. There, there are eight people here who will make the vote one way or the other. I'm just asking a question. If, if the, if it works, the banking works as it relates to the zero lot line as you're promoting, proposing here, why wouldn't it work as it was proposed originally?
Well, it, it might if we would have read the fact that, you know, it, it appeared in the last several times that this project came in front of the council that you did not want condominiums or, or high-density buildings. So that's, that's what we-
If I, if I could respond to you, I, I don't think I said I didn't want condos, nor do I, did I hear anybody say they didn't want condos. Part of our concern in previous iterations of this is there somewhat, there was a proposal to put in some high-density apartment complexes in, in addition or as opposed to the original condos that were, that were proposed in there. I don't think anybody had an issue with the condos because of the walkable point of, that, that's how that originally was sold, was the walkable neighborhood, that this was a style of living with the row house, more of a row house look to it. That's how it was originally sold to us. So I'm asking you, how is this different than that if you're going to change it to the zero lot lines? Isn't it the same thing? The zero lot line-
Zero lot line, well, the, the type of construction is, except the, it's the structure of the zoning and the way that the, the banking industry looks at a condominium as compared to a zero lot line, single-family home.
Can I make a quick comment? We're, that only applies to structures that already exist. We already have those structures. We're certainly not going to tear them down at this point.
I'm not, I'm not proposing that you would.
But, but, I mean, we have those now. So we don't have to build them. We don't have to develop them. They're already there. So the best way to, to make them, you know, owner-occupied ultimately is to change the, change it to zero lot lines away from the condominium design. We're, we're not proposing to do this for the whole development, just with what we already have constructed.
No, I think, I think you, I think as I understand it, you're asking us, why didn't we develop the whole, the re, the remainder of the property's zero lot line instead of, instead of what we did propose?
Well, there, and maybe Bob or Ron, you could refresh my memory to the, the road design as it was originally proposed. Significantly different than this or?
Mr. Gunlock?
The original layout, when this was condos, there was a 24-foot wide roadway that went through here. It was a private street. It's, it was 24 feet wide, curb face to curb face. And that's what, and that's what ran through this, this piece of property. Now with the 35 lots being single-family and, and on individual lots, the road width was increased to 30, 32 feet face to face, realizing that these lots, some of these people would be parking on street. The, the, before, when there was 94 units or whatever was in here, they had, they had small parking areas. They had their, their garage. And then they had some additional small parking areas for parking of extra vehicles, vehicles if somebody had a party as such. Here, we realize that with the single, with the single-family homes, the street has been widened, realizing that if somebody has a parking, there's going to be on-street parking. On the weekend, you'll have some on-street parking. Hopefully during the week, the majority of the people will park their vehicle in their garage. There will still be some on-street parking. In the wintertime, the city has alternate side parking, so you've got 32 feet, 32-foot street. They can only park on one side. And granted, you're going to lose some width in the wintertime just from snow storage. But it's, they can only park on one side in the wintertime. So that's kind of where-
I think also, from the time that, that first 94 was designed, which had been, and approved back in '05, there was a, there was a change in policy that, that the council took to eliminate the private streets. So even though it was approved, would have been able to be built. Probably when we came back, I think that the time had run out between '05 and, and today, we would have come back here and, and as we read it in the very beginning in the concept plan, that private, or, yeah, private streets were not going to be allowed in the city of Verona. So that's led us to go in this direction. So.
Go ahead, Mr. McGilvery.
Since you're there. So to be clear, we're not adding any housing stock as it, as it relates to what you would call affordable housing. The 160, that's existing. There is no more, we're not adding anything else.
We're adding one four-unit building of that.
So you are building something else?
Yes.
The, we have, the, the back half of where, where the relocated four unit will be, will have room for one more four-unit identical to the one that we're moving. And, and we're calling, the GDP calls for that to be constructed in the future.
And the bank, banking is okay with building that one? I mean-
Well, we have to get this approved here. And you guys got to put your blessings on it before we get the bank to approve. Because they obviously want, you know, we've, we've spoken to, I think I've been in front of four different banks, very interested in the concept. All say, tell us how the city council does. So as far as it is right now, we don't have, you know, any commitments. But I don't think that once this is created and we have a zero lot line zoning, that it would be a problem to, to finance that fourth building. It would probably not be built until most of the other existing buildings have been sold.
Thank you for your answer.
Questions, comments? Go ahead. Ms. Ricky?
Well, I haven't spoken on this yet, but I am very invested in making sure that this development is right for Verona because it's right in my backyard. I live in Hawthorne Hills, and I consider this to be a direct extension of Hawthorne Hills and not its own separate development. I mean, the way it's, it's come down to being only 35 houses, I just, I'm, I'm very invested in making sure this is the right decision. And based on everything I've heard so far, I, I think, I think it is. I think it can be. At first, I wanted to get rid of the need for the homeowners association because I think that will be tricky to deal with. And there are potential problems with that. But I just, I've come to the conclusion that there's no way to do that. I mean, the alleys need to exist. And I think it's a good idea that the park is not going to be the city's responsibility. I think it's, it's appropriate that that be a neighborhood park. Tollison Park is like a hop, skip, and a jump away. That's a public park that people can go to. And I'll, you know, already exists and the city already maintains that park. I'm, I'm hoping that this, that, that the homeowners association could down the road perhaps decide with some, you know, conversation from the people within the homeowners association to make it more of a patio community. I know that there are residents who have indicated that that, Verona needs that sort of community where people who want to can own their own single-family homes still, but perhaps have it maintained by a private, have the yard maintained by a private company, that they pay fees to have that. And that would not be a decision that's made now, but down the road through the homeowners association by the people who live there, who are invested in it. I don't think this is setting a lower standard for developers to flock to Verona because there are no other parcels of land like this in Verona that, that we would deem this feasible to, to build another development like this on. And I think it's just providing a new and different type of opportunity for potential homeowners in Verona, but not, not less worthy, not less valuable. And I think the city will only benefit from it because there will be increased tax revenue to gain for the city. It, it would be easy to say no to developers in the future if this neighborhood fails. I mean, I don't think that, that it's going to be precedent-setting. If all, all of the negative things I've heard tonight come true, then I'll be sitting here saying, oh, wow, I wish I wouldn't have supported this development. But I, I don't think that's going to happen. I think it's going to be successful. And, you know, the, the developer's done their analysis. They've, they know what the market is. I mean, we trust other professionals who do work for the city to, to say, to, to know what their job is. And I think the developer has done their homework and seems like they know that the market, the market exists. I think the 32-foot wide roads are a good compromise. In previous meetings, I thought I heard our city engineer say that, that this was not a, going to be a safety hazard. It's just a matter of having the alternate parking during the winter. And yes, of course, if there were a fire, it would be a tragedy, no matter how many buildings are destroyed, whether it's one big building or two adjacent smaller houses. I mean, it'd be a tragedy no matter what. So I just, I don't think that that's a argument against having houses that are closer together and, and providing another housing opportunity that doesn't exist in Verona currently. According to responses I've received in emails and just chatting with my neighbors and other people in other parts of the city, I've, I've heard generally good, like, like this is kind of a no-brainer. It seems like a good idea for this odd-shaped, small plot of land. And then the, the responses that I got that were, I didn't get any negative responses, but I got questions about the homeowners association and things like that. And how many of these families would have kids that would, you know, maybe extend the necessity to build another school building, which is already kind of on the docket. So I think those are questions that would, you know, be answered in the future in a reasonable manner with the school district and the city kind of working together on those things. Yes, the park is very small, but, well, as I've mentioned before, Tollison is right close by. And I don't think this would be a draw for the public to use. It'd be more like, I kind of picture it as like a backyard play structure kind of setup. So it's just going to draw the, the adjacent neighbors. So I, I was, as Mr. Years said, a little bit on the fence with this at the beginning because I thought that it wasn't providing enough of a different housing stock from what we already have in Verona. But I'm, I'm on board now with just considering it an extension of my neighborhood Hawthorne Hills. And, and I think that the, the kinks can be worked out nicely.
Further questions, comments? Mr. McGilvery?
One last thing. I hope you're right. I really do. You're going to be pressured, I'm sure, when we have our north neighborhood. I've already heard talk about a traditional neighborhood in the northern piece of the, the city. We've now, if we approve this, and it sounds like the votes are there, and that's the way it goes. But I hope that those new council members who come on board, as well as the ones who are here, hold, hold the ground a little bit when it comes time to approving development in that northern section and, and not approving another 4,000-square-foot lot size development up there, or even portions of it. I think we, in the past with the CR, I believe the reason we brought in the 6,000-foot lot and mixing in higher-density multifamily because that's what we were told we were supposed to do. And that's why we took on that type of development. And over time, I think I've heard from lots of people that they don't necessarily like having that development where you've got multifamily mixed in with the small lot sizes and the bigger lot sizes and all that stuff. That's what I've heard, ad hoc totally. So in the future, when we're looking at things, I, I hope you're right. I hope this works. And I hope you don't approve more of this just because we've done it once. Thanks.
Ms. Ricky?
I guess I just wanted to point out now that this picture is up on the screen again, that those buildings already exist and they're not going to be taken down. They're nice buildings. And so it's not that we're approving those buildings. We're just moving one and adding another one. I think that's the similar size to the one that's being moved. And then also, I wanted to point out that it's not south, but, because this isn't a directional map, I don't think, but like adjacent to that orange part, there already are houses being built there currently. And so this, you know, those people know already that they're living next to those buildings. So it's, it's no surprise to anybody. I just wanted to make that clear. Oh, and I wanted to say that the houses in my neighborhood that go up for sale sell very fast. And I would like there to be more opportunity for people to live in my neighborhood.
Further questions, comments, potential motions? Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the city adopt Resolution R-14-010, approving a preliminary plat for the Hometown Grove to create 35 single-family lots, 20 zero-lot line parcels, and four outlots.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baer?
I think Liz was in before me.
Okay. Ms. Doyle, second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Diaz, it's your motion. Do you have anything to add?
No, I've said everything I wanted to.
Okay. Comments or questions on the motion? The motion, as you've heard it, is to approve Resolution R-14-010. Any further discussion? Mr. Diaz?
Oh, sorry. I would like to ask for a roll call vote, just because I think it might be close and for clarity's sake.
Okay. Roll call vote has been requested.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Mr. McGilvery?
And typically, I think what we've done in the past with roll calls, we start at the top of the alphabet and we work our way through. I think it'd be nice if we could alternate that so that people who are at the end don't always get the benefit of being at the end.
We, we can rotate those in the future. We can rotate those in the future.
That's not always a benefit.
Ms. Schofield, if you'd read the roll, please. Again, a "aye" vote is to approve the resolution, a "no" vote is to not approve the resolution. Are you going alphabetically? Okay. Go alphabetically. Go alphabetically and then from now on, we'll...
Reverse it?
We'll reverse, yes.
Alderperson Bear?
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz?
Aye.
Alderperson Doyle?
Aye.
Alderperson Manley?
No.
Alderperson McGilvery?
No.
Alderperson Ricky?
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner?
No.
Alderperson Years?
Aye.
And the motion passes on a five-to-three vote and the resolution is approved. Mr. Years, is there anything else from the Plan Commission?
Nothing further.
All right, thank you. We'll move on then to the Finance Committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents, thirty-four cents, excuse me.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manley. Mr. McGilvery?
Well, we have explanation, two of the larger items from this month's bills, first being AECom Technical Services for Public Works Engineering, thirty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Second being to the Architectural Design Group, LLC, the new fire station Phase Two plan. That bill would be sixty-six thousand, fifty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
You've heard the explanation of the major expenditures. Are there any questions? Seeing none, the motion is to approve the payment of bills, amount totaling three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried and the bills are approved. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Under Item 9B2, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-011, approving a third addendum to the commercial lease agreement with the Sugar River United Methodist Church for the property located at one-thirty North Franklin Street, which is our former old library.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Resolution R-14-011, approving the addendum to the commercial lease agreement with the Sugar River United Methodist Church, is up, or will be up fairly soon. The city is currently leasing the building to the church and has been for quite some time. They're looking to extend this lease on a shorter term than they have in the past because they're in the process of trying to locate another piece of property. I think the committee felt that it's been a very beneficial arrangement for both interested parties and we're glad to keep them for as long as they'd like to stay. And I think this addendum helps them to have a little bit of flexibility in the event they find a piece of property.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Are there any questions on the motion? Mr. Years?
Mr. McGilvery, has the church indicated if they are close to finding another location?
I believe Mr. Burns could speak to that.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, representatives from the church have indicated that they are looking at the former Wildcat Lanes site for a possible use as a church. They're currently working on plans for how that building could be modified. That would require approval by the Plan Commission and City Council for a conditional use permit, as well as a site plan review of any changes for the building would require Plan Commission approval. So I know that's one location that they are looking at at this time. They've indicated that they would like to stay in their current location, but they would like to have some flexibility as they look at that site or potentially any other sites if that one does not go forward. So this would give them a four-month extension with the ability to extend for up to four additional months on a month-to-month basis.
Further questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mayor. Under Item 9B3, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-012, approving amendment to the 2014 City of Verona budget to fund a compensation survey and classification study.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second? Second, was that Mr. Manley? Second by Mr. Manley. Mr. McGilvery?
I think the Finance Committee did take action tonight. We would recommend approving this amendment. I think at this time, it would be better to turn it over to Mr. Burns, he did a very good job. Rather than me just read the information in the paper, he had a very good job of explaining the whys and the what-for's. So, Mr. Burns?
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, the City of Verona does not currently have a formal pay plan. We have periodically done a market survey and made adjustments. And the last time that was done, it was in the fall of 2011 for adjustments that were made effective in 2012. There was some discussion during the budget process of a desire to look at an additional survey and gathering information in preparation for the 2015 budget. After the budget was adopted, there was a discussion through the Dane County Cities and Villages Association of several communities in Dane County that are also looking at doing surveys or having a consultant assist with developing a full compensation plan. That was initiated by the City of Sun Prairie and cities of Middleton, Manona, Stoughton, McFarland, as well as Verona had indicated that there was some interest in looking at this. So those communities jointly put together a request for a proposal process, looking for a consultant who could assist with potentially two different components. One would be doing the market survey, helping identify benchmark positions, comparable communities for each one of these communities, and gathering information from them, as well as whatever private sector data is relevant and can be gathered. The second optional piece that four of those communities have expressed some interest in would be taking that a step further and taking that market information and having a consultant go through a position analysis of our various non-represented positions. They would look at internal equity factors, help in slotting positions into pay ranges, and then developing a full compensation and classification study that would focus on not just what the market information is, but how you would implement that into a pay plan and how that pay plan could be maintained over time to make sure that you stay competitive with the market over that time period. As I indicated, four of the communities are planning or had some interest in that and are taking action on whether or not they participate in that second component of the study this week. For the City of Verona, the cost to participate for just the market survey portion is two thousand dollars. If we want to, in addition, participate in the optional piece of doing the classification and compensation plan development, that's an additional cost of eleven thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus actual expenses. So the in-total, not to exceed amount for both pieces of the study for Verona would be fourteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Some of the advantages of doing this, if we are interested in a city of looking at a full pay plan development and based on our size, that may be something that we want to consider. There are some advantages of participating at this time, being able to partner with these other communities, potentially having some lower costs by doing this as a group RFP, as well as hopefully getting a better quality product through this process. The Finance Committee discussed it and had made the recommendation for an amendment to the budget since this item was not specifically budgeted in 2014. So the item before you would be an amendment to the 2014 budget to approve this item. It would be a one-time expense that would ultimately be coming from the city's fund balance. And under the timeline in the RFP, it would provide information by August that we would have that in preparation for the 2015 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Years?
This is more just of a procedural question, does this require a two-thirds vote?
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I just want to double-check. I don't believe that this does require a two-thirds vote. I will double-check on that, though, just to make sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. McGilvery.
You know, it didn't go before Personnel and I know in talking to Ms. Doyle at Finance, she thought maybe it might be appropriate for the two members who are sitting on Personnel to, you know, weigh in on this a little bit if you feel like you need to. I would say historically in the past, you know, when we've had openings, we have typically had to go out and figure out what the market rate was for the opening at that time. And I think from my point of view, I thought it might be advantageous to have this in your back pocket moving forward, just so we can make a true assessment of where we should be as it relates to the rest of the market when we're looking at our budgets. And I think that's why the Finance Committee supported Personnel.
Mr. Years?
Yeah, you know, I'm not opposed at all to the motion because if there are discrepancies, there's always ways we can fix that. But just for clarity's sake, I was just making sure that if we needed a two-thirds majority that, I mean, I don't think we won't, but just in case.
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Yeah, I'm looking it up right now just to verify. Just, council taking action to use reserves would not require a two-thirds vote, but I believe since it is presented as a formal budget amendment, that it would require a two-thirds vote because of it being a budget amendment.
Further clarification on that, Mr. Years, or not?
No.
Okay. Mr. Baer?
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity as a member of the Personnel Committee. I think this is a good thing to do, just to make sure that when we're trying to attract top talent, retain top talent, that we know where those boundaries are for compensation. And, you know, I'd like to also see this expanded for benefits, but that's a, you know, obviously, larger issue to tackle probably in the future.
Thank you. Further questions or comments on the motion? Okay, just to clarify, or reaffirm, I should say, it will require a two-thirds vote. It does not require a roll call vote unless it's requested, but it would require a two-thirds vote of the common council. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All right. Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, anything additional from Finance?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on then to Public Works, Sew and Water. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Excuse me. Under Item 9C1, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-013, approving a development agreement for Scenic Ridge Phase Six with the Scenic Ridge Development, LLC, Agent Brian McKee.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. McGilvery?
This would be the final phase. And with that final phase, we would also expect to see Locust Drive be built out, his portion of it, or the LLC's portion of it. In conjunction with that, by the end of 2017, the bridge would also be reconstructed. The documents, I believe, are in your package if you have any specific questions. We do have Mr. Reader, Mr. Gunlock here.
You've heard the explanation from Mr. McGilvery. Are there questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution R-14-013 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Under Item 9C2, I'll make a motion to award the contract for the Lincoln Street Reconstruction Water Main Replacement Project to Hammersley Stone Company in the amount of eight-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and twenty-two cents.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Manley. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. The city will be reconstructing approximately twenty-two hundred feet of Lincoln Street, south of the Drainage Way Crossing, two hundred feet of Oak Court, and two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet of Holiday Court. Pavement in this area is approximately forty-two years old. Included in this project is a replacement of the water mains. The city sent out thirty-one sets of plans to contractors and suppliers, six sealed bids were received for the project. The low base bid was submitted by Hammersley Stone, Inc., Pittsburgh in the amount of eight-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. The second lowest bid was submitted by A1 Excavating in Bloomer, Wisconsin, with an amount of nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. And the high bid was submitted by Ian N. Hughes out of Monroe, Wisconsin, in the amount of nine-hundred-and-ninety thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars and fifty cents. The city engineer's prior estimate to bid opening with contingencies was eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, five-hundred dollars. So the bid from Hammersley was five percent below what the engineers had estimated the project would come in at. As those of you are aware, Hammersley Stone has done quite a bit of work for us in the city. They do a professional job, they're on time, and the Public Works Committee voted to award the contract.
You've heard the explanation from Mr. McGilvery. Are there questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract for the Lincoln Street Reconstruction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery?
Lastly, Item 9C3, make a motion to approve Amendment Number Two to a professional service agreement for the Lincoln Street Reconstruction and Water Main Replacement Project with AECom in the amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. The city has entered into this PSA with AECom for engineering services for the design of Lincoln Street Reconstruction and Water Main Replacement. Amendment Two would add construction administration and construction staking services for this project. Construction administration would be six thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Construction staking would be twenty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Would bring the total revised price for the engineering on this project to sixty-nine thousand, one-hundred dollars.
Again, you've heard the explanation from Mr. McGilvery. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve Amendment Number Two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Is there anything else from Public Works, Sew and Water Committee?
No, I gladly turn it over.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Next, we move on to Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9D1, I'll make a motion to approve a special event permit for Hometown Days to occur June 12th through the 15th, 2014. And the application is from the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Baer. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is an event we're all very familiar with, definitely the signature community event for Verona. This will be the first year that the Chamber of Commerce has taken over the management of this event. And the only real significant change, according to Carl Curtis at the public hearing today of the Public Safety and Welfare Committee, is that they changed one of the bands. But otherwise, everything is, it's the smooth sailing event that we've seen in our community for many years. When we considered it earlier this evening, we approved it unanimously, but with the condition that all of the background checks needed to clear. And in the interim time period, Chief Coughlin has let me know that all of the background checks were successfully completed and we no longer need to have that contingency for this item or the item after it.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. You've heard the explanation. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you. Item, under Item 9D2, I'll make a motion to approve an application for a temporary Class B beer license for Verona Hometown Days, June 12th through the 15th, 2014, from the Fitchburg Verona Rotary Club.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Years. Mr. Manley?
Again, same event. This is the beer-serving license for the beer tent. The applicant will be taking all of the same precautions as in the past with fencing and ID checking and having assistance from law enforcement, you know, to run the beer tent. So we gave our unanimous recommendation earlier this evening and hope the council will support it.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. You've heard the explanation. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9D3, we had originally proposed reviewing a liquor license premise amendment to allow for a rib cook-off... premise amendment to allow for a rib cook-off at the fifth quarter. And as much as I was looking forward to partaking in that kind of an event, they're just not 100% sure on the timing and when they would be able to execute the event itself. So we took no, at the applicant's request, we took no action earlier this evening at the committee level. And the applicant would like to come back at a later date and seek the approval of the council. So my recommendation would be that we take no action on this item this evening.
With unanimous consent, we will take no action on this item. Is there anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. We are then on new business, discussion, and possible action regarding approval of operator licenses. Ms. Schofield, please.
We have operator licenses from Angel Shomar at Kahoots, Ricardo Vera at Kukos, Jennifer Utterfer at Gray's Tidehouse, and Matthew Nikas at Verona Liquor.
You've heard the applicant's names. Is there any potential motion, discussion? Move approval? We have a motion by Mr. Yours to approve the applicants. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of operator licenses signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carried. We are on Agenda Item Number 11, which is announcements. Are there any announcements? Mr. Steiner?
Thank you, Mayor. The Verona Historical Society will have their monthly meeting this Wednesday, the 16th, at the Senior Center at 3:00 PM, to finish up our topic on area country schools. It's the last one, and then we will close for the summer, so everybody can play golf. The second announcement I have is concerns of Verona area active adults. If you do not get enough brats in your basket at Easter time, they will be holding a brat sale on Friday, the 25th, starting at 11:00 AM till 6:00 PM. Carryouts available. Just call the Senior Center and tell them how many you want for your brat basket, and they will have them ready for you to pick up. It's their annual fundraiser, and they look forward to satisfying you if the Easter bunny does not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other announcements? Mr. Yours?
I promised the second graders at Country View Elementary School that I'd recognize them and also thank them for coming to City Hall a couple of weeks ago now. We just haven't had a meeting. They came as part of their tour of the city. It was refreshing to see young, excited faces in this room, and eager to learn about what we do. And they even held their own mock meeting where Chief Coughlin, they raised our speed limits to 45 miles an hour on Main Street.
I'll second that.
So we have to get some new signs. But I wanted to thank the second graders from Country View Elementary.
Thank you. Other announcements this evening? Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's my last meeting as a city council member, and I just wanted to express what an honor it's been for me to serve the city for the past six years as a city council member. One of the things that I've learned throughout that six-year period, and I've learned an awful lot, is that we've got some really outstanding staff in our city. And I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of really good people, a lot of great department heads. Perhaps the one I've worked closest with is Chief Coughlin because of my service on the Public Safety and Welfare Committee. And I think we're very, very lucky to have such a knowledgeable and dedicated chief of police as we do in Chief Coughlin. And the other committee that I've served on over that six-year period is the Finance Committee. And I can't say enough good things about Bill and Cindy, both of whom work very hard on behalf of the city and who do an excellent job of helping us to manage city finances. And it's been, it's bittersweet that I am leaving, but with three children and a wife, and a job with more demands, it's just one of those things that, you know, I just, something had to give, and it wasn't going to be my job or my family, so it had to be city council, just because there's not enough hours in the day. But it's been a wonderful experience for me, and I've enjoyed working with everybody sitting around the table, and others that came before us. And just wanted to express my gratitude for the opportunity to do that and to work with you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Baer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your kind words earlier. I appreciate it. And I want to say thank you to all of you who are here and supported me, and even those who didn't support my appointment. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here and fill out the rest of this term. It was an honor. I promised when I was appointed that I would ask good questions and always be prepared, and I think I fulfilled my duty. Maybe asked a few too many questions sometimes. So thank you for indulging me, all of you. And I'd like to say good luck to the new members of this body, and congrats again to my successor, Mr. Touche. And thank you to Mr. Linder for your willingness to serve the community. Thank you both for your willingness to serve the community. It's always good to see people that are interested and willing to take the time away from their family, time away from jobs, as Mr. Manley mentioned, time away from whatever else is out there. My softball team plays on Mondays, so maybe their team batting average will improve a little with my being there a few more times. But to be seen, I think, on that one. And I also want to say thanks to the staff. We are very blessed in Verona to have such good, competent, qualified, caring staff who take time away from their families to sit through our long meetings and certainly do a good job being patient and helpful and understanding. And we are just so incredibly lucky to have all of you. So thank you, and keep up the good work. And finally, thank you to all of you again for doing what you do. As I said, it takes a lot of time away from your families, a lot of time away from other things, and you're doing a good job, even if it doesn't sometimes sound like that from critiques or criticisms, whatever is out there. But you really are doing a good job. Verona's a good place to live. Keep it up. Keep having long meetings. Keep having good, healthy debates. Voters and taxpayers certainly benefit from that. So please keep it up, and thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mike, as well. Just to echo what both of you said regarding the staff, we've said this all along, our staff are second to none. You know, we're very, very privileged to have the people working for us that we do, not just working for us, but working for everyone in the city. Both of you talked a little bit about community service, and I've just found community service to be very rewarding. And I'm sure every one of us sitting around here agrees with that. So thank you again for your part of community service. Thank you so much. Any other announcements this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Mr. Manley and seconded by Mr. Baer. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.